Good afternoon, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the Civic Center Advisory Committee and Joint Council Meeting, February first, two thousand seventeen, four o'clock. Can I get the real call, please?
Yes. City Council, Councilmember DeGolia?
Here.
Councilmember Wimmer?
Yep.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wees?
Here.
Mayor Lempres?
I'm present.
Don DeBoc.
CCAC members DoStar?
Paul?
Here.
David?
Here.
Dilobo?
Yeah.
Fisher? Meridoo?
Here.
Tenelli?
Here.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We'll start the first thing for public comments from anybody that any item that is on the agenda. Seeing no public comments, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. I'm going to move to regular agenda. Item number one A, Town Center Project History. And can I ask staff to make this limited to thirty minutes or less? Sorry? Chair DoStar just came in. Thirty minutes for le- or let- if you can do the whole meeting in thirty minutes or less, that'd be good.
All right. I will give it my best shot. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the council. And, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me all right?
I can hear you all right.
All right. So I'm going to go through the- to the first slide. Turn it on outside. Got it? So I'm not going to go through the history document itself. That's a- that was a collaborative effort by Chair DoStar, Vice Chair Howe, member Meridoo, and council liaisons DeGolia, Lewis, and staff. So you have that big history document. Many of you have lived through that history intimately. So I'm not going to go into detail. But the things that I wanted to do was just hit the major project milestones, which you can see up on the PowerPoint slide there, starting in two thousand thirteen with the preliminary master plan. That was the big building and the big number, the big box from HMC on that master plan. We then revised that master plan significantly, took out a lot of things like the basement, the firing range, and all those things that were part of that building. They became all add alternates. And it got reduced in its gross square footage size to about twenty-four point five, library about ten point nine, construction costs of about twenty-three point one divided up between the two facilities. That was with HMC. That was absolutely no real detail to the buildings, no real design. It was a big box. So there was no, I guess faith is the wrong word, but no competence in the estimate. As we started to move forward and actually hired an architect and hired MAC five as our project manager estimator, things got a little more detailed, been a little more specific. So we did that in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. We started into conceptual design, got that approved in two thousand fifteen. Construction cost of thirty-three point two, about thirty-eight point five gross square feet, divided up between the admin and PD, as you can see there, twenty-two point five for the admin PD cost estimated for construction. And then we moved on to schematic, where a lot more details came into play. A lot of the unknowns became knowns. The construction cost in total was thirty-four, thirty-five point four, about thirty-two point seven gross square foot for admin PD, with the construction cost for that at twenty-five point one. I apologize. I'm not spending a lot of attention on the library part because we're really focused on the Civic Center part of it. Council directed that we reduce the size of the building and create some add alternates to pull a lot of things out of that base contract cost. So then we hit fifty percent design development. That's where we had a construction cost of thirty-four point six. Now the building size was thirty thousand two sixty-six in gross square feet. And note that includes the outbuildings of the police department, which have their evidence, motorcycle storage, garage storage, things like that. Now the estimated construction cost was twenty-one point seven million for the admin PD component. The library component went up. We had a better idea of what the site work allocations were for each of those two facilities. Now we're at a hundred percent design development. The council's going to see that on February fifteenth. Construction cost to be determined. We don't quite know what that number is. Staff guesses it's going to go up from that twenty-one point seven, but we're not exactly sure how much. We do know a lot more detail, so that's very helpful. And the admin PD size is about thirty thousand nine twenty-three in gross square footage. It did change a little bit. Part of that was we added about two hundred and fifty square feet to the outbuildings of the police department. We added a foot in depth to those buildings all the way along to create some turning needs, to put equipment up and things like that. And then the interior of the lower floor on the council chamber size, if you remember the CCAC intimately remembers, that council chambers went from a box to a more elongated council chambers, and that changed the whole length of that side of the building, and that tweaked some of the square footage. So that's where you got about a four hundred to five hundred square foot difference on the internal side of that building. And that brings us to today. That concludes this afternoon.
Should have condensed to nine pages.
You got twenty- got twenty-seven minutes.
Wow.
I think it was a- I think it was a very well-written history document that we're going to make sure is posted on the website, so everybody's got a good feel for what we've all been through.
Very detailed.
Now, two thousand seventeen, you have the library at ninety-eight seventy-six. Is that proof of this?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
So the first thing I want to do is go ahead and ask if there's any public comments related to this. Seeing no public comments, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. I want to start by asking Mayor Lempres, do you have anything on this?
Yeah. What I want to do is make sure that we are looking at this in two lenses. The first lens is just to see if we really do agree that these are facts that we all agree on, common facts, so that we have a common understanding as we move forward. So please, if anybody thinks any of these facts are wrong or different or whatever, this is a great time to raise that and to see if we can get those straight. And then a second lens that I'd like to look at this through is if this was an opportunity to say, hey, have we done what we should be doing to make sure that, you know, the scope of the building is appropriate, that the expenses are appropriate, that we've acted reasonably, and we feel like we've acted prudently? Because if we do end up going back to the voters, we need to feel comfortable that we've done what we can to be presenting them with the right size building, the right cost building. And then it's just aside from those two things, a final point I'd like to make is we are, as we get slowly toward the end of this process, I just want to, once again, take the opportunity to publicly thank the Civic Center Advisory Committee, because I think we see the finish line in sights for them and for all of us. I just wanted to acknowledge that now. But those are my goals, Gary. So, thank you, everybody.
Perfect. Thanks, Mike. Let's go ahead and throw the first point out to everybody. Facts related to the project. Does everybody seem to think that staff is reasonably accurate on their assessment of the project history? Please, Clyde.
Where it says construction costs, is that including any other costs like design costs?
No. The slide, I wanted to keep it all apples to apples up there, so I pulled out the design costs into a separate item up there, the three point two million, and excluded that from the construction detail for each one.
Okay. So my only comment would be it might be appropriate to write the word estimated in front of construction cost.
Any other? Seeing that, we'll move on to Mike's second. Any council member want to chime in or you're comfortable?
I'm second.
First point first.
I was just going to say through the chair about, so the Blue Ribbon Task Force created a giant book that is in our archives. I think Teresa may have it on her shelf. The Town Center Task Force created another big book of historical documents and, you know, how we got from point A to point B, the analysis, and, you know, how we kind of based a lot of the decisions that were then the foundation for going forward in this. So I think that the history, I think staff did a really good job of capturing the gist of it. And it's a long history, and now's the time to just move on and try to finish it.
It's nice that we're still moving forward.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Moving on, oh, Steve.
So the, a good chunk of the CCAC was also TCTF.
That's every task force.
And I couldn't remember when we started, so I was thrilled when it got into the staff report. It's seven years ago. That group, you know, that combined group has been working more or less for seven years.
Yes.
And we started with an attitude that the Blue Ribbon Task Force was too rosy, and we were going to chop it down. And we were going to make sure staff wasn't being greedy about space, and that they were going to make them share space and make sure there were, you know, things, uses that were, you know, not redundant. And we really started pretty hard tack. And we went and met with staff, and we managed, oversaw their meetings. We were much more aggressive than the CCAC because we were allowed to meet.
Yeah.
And so we really went through square footages. We really went through uses, even when it wasn't easy to get into. We went into them. We did peer reviews of similar-sized cities. The only two places that if, you know, we had to save a ton of money, the two places that we spent a little more were to, one, make the buildings look like they belonged in Atherton. Instead of having cheap suburban-looking office buildings, we made them look like something that felt right for Atherton. So we put stucco on the outside and tile on the roof. Okay. And then number two is we created town green. And that was, you know, that was a decision made, I forget what it, to end the, you know, kind of originally, the very first sign, way back at the beginning, was NMR, street grid state of place. We put one building over there. Had nothing to do with the library because the library was leaving the town, you know, leaving the downtown. And so those are the two places that we consciously decided with council's encouragement, this is a public good unit to live into this town. So I think that's the honest answer. Everything else was very, very, very careful and thoughtful.
Thanks, Steve. That's a good lead into the next one, which is, do we feel we've been responsible in the scoping and everything related to the project? It sounds like Steve's got a good grasp from being involved for seven years? Wow. Any other members want to have any comments on that?
Well, I just wanted to point out that, and as George and I have talked a couple times, and I think he's mentioned to everybody else, is that, you know, once we get the design done, then there is a step of value engineering, just relooking at the total design. I know that, I'm sure everybody is starting to look at the new complete hundred percent design. And there are some things in there that at least deserve to be questioned, that are going to not save millions, but are going to, you know, make sure that we're doing things as cost-effective as possible. So the cost that we see on, you know, a week from next Wednesday is going to be, you know, can be refined a little bit further. Of course, there will always be change orders that would come down, but I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that value engineering stage.
Yeah, I would like to make another comment related to that, supporting it. I mean, to the residents, we're constantly going to be looking at it. What we can do, we will do. We understand we're spending taxpayer dollars, and, you know, all of us, everybody here's been committed, is doing a good quality project for the best price, and we're getting there. And as we get our next run of numbers through MAC five, we'll get a look and see where we are then, and make decisions at that point, what we have to do or what we don't have to do. But it's part of the process, so. Any other?
Yeah, the only I would say, and Steve knows as well as anybody, that sometimes as you value engineer, you have to be careful that you kind of your core premise, the things you're trying to achieve, you start to kind of pick away at the side. Sometimes you really undermine the underpinning of some of the concepts you're trying to bring forward. So I surely understand being a resident here, we want to keep the cost as low as possible, but just be careful as you start to pick at the perimeter, because sometimes it has a bigger impact when people recognize.
Anyone else? Mike, any final comments?
Mayor Lempres?
Mayor Lempres, any final?
Yeah, yeah, no. Apologies. I had to mute, had my mute button on, so it took me a second to unmute. No, I just want to make sure that everybody feels like they're comfortable with where we are. Our adult comments about value engineering, I want to make sure we're all in the same place about that, to make sure we have a common understanding of how we're moving forward, to keep making sure we're doing this prudently. But generally, I agree with everything that's said.
Thank you, Mike. We are going to move on to phase two, which is item number B, Civic Center Project Review. Discuss and provide staff with feedback regarding, and we're going to break it down into two sections, funding status and options related to measure L. I know that there are several CCAC members that have other commitments. If you've got anybody who wants to leave, don't have to. We'd love to have you. But you can continue on with us as we move into item number, which we'll just call it the funding status.
Mr. Vice Mayor, before you move on, technically, it's an adjournment of the CCAC meeting. Like, welcome to stay, of course, but technically an adjournment. The chair can take care of that.
CCAC, you're permitted to adjourn.
Do I have, do I need a motion, Emily? Do I want a motion to, from the CCA member to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. Have a second? Thank you. All in favor, I? Post. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, as the mayor indicated, we thank you all for your participation in everything to this point and in the future.
I have one personal item.
No such thing.
I have a gift for the town. Because I was going to do it on Monday, but this is too good an opportunity. So for years, when the architects have been presenting on these boards, and they always tend to take their little laser pointer, and they, it doesn't work, and then, you know, where was the, or is there a pole? So, you know, in the words of blazing saddles, stand back while I whip this out. So I give, I'm driven to the town on the interim basis until we build a new town center. I have a pointer now.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Rubber tip, so we won't break our screen. So I'm going to turn this, this, I'm going to back it, George. I'm going to turn it over to you.
How long is that parting yet?
Wow.
Bravo.
Very nice.
We need a new one. This is getting us through.
Thank you, Steve. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, and mayor on the phone. The staff report briefly outlines the funding of the project, the funding plan with the fifty percent design development cost. You can see that within the staff report, beginning on page three. That's one of the major items for conversation this evening, that walks through a design cost estimate of need for design and construction of twenty-four point four million. We have an estimate from Atherton Now, a target of seven million, assuming that's met. Our budget requirement remaining would be seventeen point four. We could apply the building fee revenue of two point nine. That leaves us about fourteen point five in need. If we allocate ERAF over the next three years of the project life, that would be an estimated three point one million. That would drop that need down to eleven point three nine. And then we have unallocated general fund surplus. That's about four point six. That drops it to six point seven. And then unallocated CIP, capital improvement project surplus of four point four. That actually drops our funding gap to about two point three million. Again, this is based on the fifty percent design development estimate. And as Councilmember Whitmer mentioned, that might change on February fifteenth. So staff's recommendation is that that's the funding plan, and to close that gap, we would first use any increased donations, whether they're from Atherton Now or others. We would then look at excess general fund revenues over expenditures over the next few years, the life of the project. And then beyond that, we could issue some short-term borrowing through certificates of participation if there was still a gap that needed to be closed. That's the general funding plan. I can stop at that point if you'd like, Mr. Vice Mayor. You can talk about that issue before we move on.
That's absolutely perfect. I want to thank you for giving me that period. I then now want to ask if there's any public comments related to this item on the agenda. Seeing no public comments, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. And I'm going to start by tossing this section to Mayor Lempres. Any comments on the funding status?
Yeah. Hey, I look forward to an open, you know, robust conversation here. But as to where we pause, I just want to make sure I, we all have a common understanding on this. And I think where I am or what I heard is, one, we have no intent to raise additional taxes to pay for this in any way. Two, in order of priority or preference, we would look first to Atherton Now, additional contributions to make up this shortfall that we've identified. First, we'd look there. Then the next place we'd look would be to our existing funds, our general fund revenues that we have right now. And then it would only be, thirdly, that we would look to other vehicles to get money, which I guess we'll discuss in detail next, but that might include certificates of participation or something like that. And I'd love if we could see if we have an agreement amongst council, if those are the right priorities in terms of a waterfall of funding options, if there's agreement there.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike. Councilmembers, chime in. Councilmembers, please.
Certificate of Participation. Reading through the staff report, it looks like in order to be able to issue certificates of participation, we have to have a credit rating done on the town. We have to establish a credit rating. And it's my understanding that the town's never had a credit rating ever. And when we were doing the Town Center Task Force evaluation of how we would finance it, again, you have to understand, that was back in two thousand ten. That seems like a long time ago now. The town was in a very different financial situation. But we realized that we didn't have a credit rating, so we wouldn't be able to really participate with the build America bonds or other things. So that was out. And how likely is it that we can get a credit rating in within one timeframe? It seemed like it was going to, would take a long time to get a credit rating.
Robert and I talked with Michael Bush from Urban Futures, who's one of the consultants that I tagged about a year or so ago, just to have this conversation. And, yeah, we would need a credit rating before we could go out and do some short-term solutions, like a certificate of participation. They don't see an issue with it. And one of the things they look, one of the things they look at is our revenues over expenditure projections and our fund reserve policy, our current surplus policies, our current surpluses in the bank. So presently, we're pretty, we're pretty healthy.
Like I said, it was very different.
Right.
Financial environment.
Right. So they would, they would look at that, and I'm guessing it's about a three to six month process.
Oh, three to six months, okay.
To do. And staff would recommend that we do that at the very, right away. Hire, hire that financial advisor to help us do that process. Whether or not we issue COPs, at least have that done so that we could.
Will it cost us anything?
We do that once. We modify measure L.
Correct.
But I mean, it's a-
Well, we can do it anytime.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's a, it's a, the debt.
We want to do a credit rating while we have our reserves and everything like that because they look at the ratios of how much extra you have over your expenses.
Yeah.
And what you're looking at borrowing. So we-
Something to change.
And so-
Something to get better between now and July.
Well, but we don't have to overturn measure L to do it. We could start the credit rating stuff now.
Well, I guess, my, one of my follow-up questions is, is it something that it would be good for us to have in our back pocket anyway?
Yes. If there were some large, for instance, Marsh Road.
Right.
If we, we could have done COPs for that and-
Does it cost us anything?
Yes. We would have to hire the financial advisor, the underwriter, the bond counsel, those sorts of things would cost.
And who issues it? Standard and Poor's, Moody's?
Either one.
Either one.
It most likely would be Standard and Poor's as far as credit rating. And it just takes, it's going to, it'll take, they'll interview the town staff, look at our financials, whatever those things.
So to go to Councilwoman Lewis's comments, can we start this process of bringing in somebody to get us, walk us through what the process is? I mean, it doesn't hurt us like anything else to do anything in advance, because there's probably going to be a timeframe. You hate to ask for a loan before, or ask for something the night before you need it. It never works. I mean, you usually pay more for it in that case. So does staff, does staff have somebody that can come in and walk us through and when can we do it?
Yes, and we could probably reach out to them in the next week or two and have them come March, April timeframe and make a presentation if you like.
Councilman Goodboy.
Well, I, I look at this only slightly differently than how it was outlined. I think there's a, there are four steps that we have. And I'll come back and comment on this, but I just want to lay out the way I see the four steps. The first step is, as Mike laid out, private donations. I think those private donations don't, we don't need to look only to Atherton Now. There are some people that have made donations directly to the town of Atherton for the civic project. And any donations for the civic project qualifies private donations and are tax deductible. And we should continue to seek private donations throughout the entire process, which gives us another two years of opportunity to raise money. I'm looking at that we have a two point three million dollar gap that may increase to three million dollars when the February numbers come in. But there's, given the size of the overall project, if we are able to overturn measure L or modify measure L, we have a relatively small gap. And the first solution to closing that gap, I think, is private donations. The second is to use general funds and to be able to, that are not part of our established reserves. And to do that, we need to modify measure L. The third step, and I think it's part and parcel of this process, is we need to pass the parcel tax in November. And I'm not suggesting that we change the parcel tax, but we need to pass the parcel tax because we need to count on the one point eight million dollars that comes in from the parcel tax beginning next June in order to have the funds available from the revenue and access of use to fund the, to fill out what the staff has analyzed so that we only have a three million dollar gap. And I think it's important that we be upfront, that part of the strategy is that we pass the parcel tax in November and put that in front of people.
And it's no new taxes.
It's no new taxes. And number four is that if and only if we're unable to fill the gap with private donations and the general funds that we've talked about, then we would do the COPs. And in my mind, we're going to reduce the amount because there are going to be further private donations as we move into this, as we begin to build it. I know I'm talking to people right now. There are going to be more and some substantial donations. And we may be able to eliminate the gap. And if we can, that would be great because it would enable us to make some of the investments in the CIPs that we're going to have to forego for a while. I do question whether we should go out and put us in position to get the COPs, which means getting the credit rating and hiring the underwriter and paying the council, before our residents have agreed that we should be able to access general funds to fund the Civic Center. The only reason we'd be doing it is to, is to leverage our sound fiscal position in order to borrow money. But that would not be supported by the current language of measure L. And I think we need more conversation about that issue.
Well, but I think we should talk about it.
I'm so excited.
Understand the process. My only concern on a COP would be, of course, you know, as George and Robert laid out in the COP, obviously, the town would be able to invest in it, and it would be a tax-free, it's like buying into a bond.
And we could work into residents.
And my, yeah. But my concern would be perhaps some of these people have made a pledge, says, hell, wait a second, I can make five percent. It's tax-free. Some would turn my million-dollar donation into a, into a COP. And so, and that's-
Some people want the tax deduction.
Yeah.
Some people would rather have the income.
Right. But we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot.
I agree.
But I do think that, you know, the ratios that they look at for the, for your credit rating are important. And right now, we're flush. And so that's the only reason I'd be supportive of at least getting a credit rating now, not necessarily, as you said, going out and saying, we're getting it only for the COP, but we can use it for any, anything really in the future. So like the trash board, you know, the SBWMA, they have, they've got a bond, and they have got covenants, and they have to do a-
Only if we return measure L.
Yeah, they have to do a credit rating all the time. So, anyway.
But those credit ratings have to be renewed on a regular basis. Once you have one, it's not, it's not good forever.
No, you-
You know, because it's-
Yes, that's correct.
You get audited, you get, you know, and there's ongoing fees. So, I mean, I just want to know, you know, what kind of value it is.
You only have to renew them when you go back out for bonds or COPs or some financing thing. There's no other real benefit to having a rating. And you're correct. Whenever you go out for bonds, they require you to do it all over again.
Like within, I mean, you go, you try to get a mortgage, and if you don't close within ninety days, they want all new financials after, you know, ninety days. So, I mean, would that, would we be putting ourselves in a position to have to, you know, renew it every ninety days? So you're probably-
Right.
Well, that's what I was going to ask Bill that.
Yeah.
Once you get the rating, how long is it good for? Because we may not do the COP for a year from now or a year and a half from now.
They're usually tied to the reason that you're asking them to do it.
Ah.
So it's like bonds, or if you're going out for COPs. And that's why, you notice in the report, they talk- And that's why, you notice in the report, they talk about, if we're going out for COPs, we do this, 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 and this. And, and, and it's all, they're really all tied together. And I can't, I, I have no expertise beyond really bonds, and even there, it's sketchy. And I think that George could certainly go out and ask these people, is there any benefit to us, you know, looking at it now? And, and you've hit the, the real issue, they're gonna come back and say, even if they do it now, they're gonna require you to resubmit your financials right at the last minute, 'cause they wanna make sure that you didn't get your credit rating and then you ran out and you, you know, get a whole lot of.
Which is what we're planning to do.
So, so, so no disrespect.
No, they know that.
So no disrespect to Bill, but Bill identified exactly what the problem is, he's not the expert. So the idea of bringing in somebody to get us up to speed that actually would be considered an expert is exactly what we would think would be an option to discuss and so on and so forth.
More information's better.
More information's better, and, and that really does go in line with, consistent with the mayor, with what he said by adding number four, we really do have an outline process, and then getting more information would really solidify how we would have number four. So let me ask Mike if anybody else have any other comments related to this topic.
Do we have members of the public?
Can I actually ask a question?
Sure.
So I read through the description of the COPs. One thing I wasn't clear on is how, is it like a bond that, you know, after thirty years it terminates? Or is this something that the town has as a sort of a rental stream to the COP holder indefinitely?
It's, it's, it's a short-term financing option, and it's kind of, the left hand is renting to the right hand of the one organization.
But you have to mention of the time period, so there isn't.
Usually they're about five to ten years.
Oh, so it's a relatively short period.
Publicating municipalities can't borrow money. There's, well, there's, yeah, you can't get, you can't mortgage your property, there's constitutional limitations on it. And so they develop these kind of really tricky little financing tools. COPs, short-term, bonds, longer term, and then there's a myriad of different kinds of bonds that you're aware. And so, and they all have their own rules and regulations and requirements, and this is just one that.
Clyde, that's exactly why an expert would be good to give us timeframes and everything else, and worship, no offense, a little bit of the dark about an expert.
I agree. I mean, at a minimum, we need to know what the costs will be to, you know, take all the steps to be able to do the COPs, because we're gonna wanna let people know that in the context of the June measure.
Absolutely, the cost, the timeframe, the terms, and those are all clearly gonna be identified by an expert. Something we can explore in another day.
And if I might add, usually the, the terms for, for bonding, it can't be past the useful life of the building. So, I mean, you know, after thirty years. So obviously the consideration which is gonna be short-term financing.
I, I'll long-term be really dead by the time I get to the end of it. So, Mayor, anything from you, sorry?
Yeah, could I, I know I'm not, I'm not following probably as well as those of you there, but could we just get real transparent and see if there is agreement as to the waterfall that, that Rick laid out or the order in which we would prefer to fund the project? That there's, there's no intent for additional taxes or to build in new taxes? That in terms of priorities, we were gonna be looking first to additional donations and rectified rates, that don't come from after now, but, but after now, be one vehicle. Though we then look to, to general fund revenues and excess of expenditures, and it's only, the doctor, we'd also have a, an assumption that we are intending to keep the parcel tax at, at that same level, and then finally that we would be looking for, you know, additional sources, whether it's certificate of participation or other, only at, at the end of that process. And we're getting more information about that. Is, is there agreement that that's, that's the way we're proceeding?
I'm in agreement.
Elizabeth says yes, Rick says?
Yes.
And Bill says?
Yeah, I think we have to look at the other revenue generating sources that we've talked about before we commit long-term to continue to have the parcel tax. Because I know we've had those discussions, now I realize that those are two, two years away from, from having another discussion on them. But, but there are other revenue sources. But definitely, with regards to the parcel tax, you know, I guess, Mike, you know, when we brought up before at the last discussion, there was the discussion of taking the parcel tax money and using it to supplement what we put in that right now, for example, in the police, having it fund their general fund requirements, and then having that be available to be used in the capital environment. And I know that you've had some concerns about being able to do that, but hopefully we're over with that.
And, and, but it seems like all four items, you're really consistent with what the mayor said. So I think that would be a yes, but we're still going to be ironing out the details related to the parcel tax downstream with alternate sources of funding. And Mike, I'm supportive of all four, and thank you for the additional language, Rick, 'cause we keep forgetting that anyone can donate us, donate money to us, and that's always good.
Well, I think that that should be reflected in the.
Rick has another comment, sorry, Rick.
So, just one thing I think the staff should think about as you go through this. And I, I think what Bill brought up is a valid point, which is we're particularly flesh now. And we will be particularly flesh until we start construction, right, or, or commit funds for construction. And at that point, we're gonna, assuming that Mezrel is overturned, we will start to use those funds. So we need to think about whether we would do a COP before we start to use those funds, because our financial position will be different. And whether, and, and I'm not advocating this, I'm just throwing out the idea so we, you know, are consciously talking about it. But I, I'm not sure how the rating authority would work it. But if they look at us and they say, well, you have nine million dollars of, ten, ten million dollars of unallocated surplus and another seven or so million dollars of structured reserves, we'll give you this rating as a result of that, does that mean you then can't change it? Because we're obviously gonna wanna use that ten million dollars of unallocated reserves. And somebody just needs to look at it and make an intelligent judgment. It may be that our, you know, thirty percent strict reserves that we've got put away are enough to give us a good rating and that we don't need the unallocated reserves. So I, I don't have the ability to.
We're kinda talking cart before the horse, you know, like maybe do CIPs.
It was an issue Bill raised, and I just think that should be considered.
George?
The other issue that the council should think about as we get to that point, and you've talked about how much donations you receive, you talk about the general fund revenues over expenditures and your surplus, but maybe you don't wanna spend one hundred percent of your surplus. And maybe there's a sweet spot for a COP that's five million or seven million versus two million or three million in terms of the rate of return that you get. So you get a higher COP and you save some of your unallocated surplus funds.
And that would give us additional money to pull in reserve to make sure our ratios stay good.
Makes sense.
All of which a financial advisor could assist us with.
Yeah.
So Mike, it sounds like we're all on the same page, and the right thing was no new taxes. I'd like that. All right, so let's go ahead and move to item number two under section B, which is options related to Mezrel.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council, Mr. Mayor on the phone. Before that, though, was also the value engineering conversation, which staff put in there just at the high level, but you've already touched on it, is February fifteenth, after we get to hundred percent design development, that's the point at which staff will go back to the plan sets and look through ways that we can do some of that. So now, moving on to Mezrel, Teresa put together a timeline that's in your PowerPoint presentation that talks about when ballot arguments are due, when the vote by mail option goes out, and when election day is. And so you're, you're working backwards from there. But before you move into crafting or wordsmithing the ballot language, I wanna turn it over to the city attorney, who has some other information to share with the council at this point.
Well, let me see if I can confuse everybody greatly by a very recent discovery of mine, let's call it today. There was a Supreme Court decision in twenty sixteen that sort of turns this all on its head. It's my opinion that Mezrel is in fact not binding, never was binding, and cannot be binding. And the reason is, the Supreme Court took a confusing issue that even confused them. In two thousand and fourteen, there was a ballot proposition statewide, Prop forty-nine, that you never saw, never voted on, because before it could be put on the ballot, the Supreme Court was asked to remove it, and they did. And they removed it because the state had a provision, very much like the one that applies to cities, that says essentially, you can, the city council, the legislative body, can adopt an initiative and put it on the ballot yourselves, which is what we did back in twenty twelve. But what you put on the ballot was stated to be, you could, Elections Code nine two two two, applying to cities, said you could submit to the voters without a petition, which is the regular way initiatives come forward, a proposition to repeal, amend, or enact, and ordinance. Go back and read Mezrel, there's no ordinance. Well, how did that come about? Way it came about was pretty simple. As long as I've been doing this, which is pushing forty years, there's been the ability to take advisory measures to the public and ask them, what do you think about this? And that's what the ballot proposition forty-nine would have done. Would have gone to the California, everybody in California say, what do you think about advising us to take a matter to the United States Congress, recommend that they do something? And the, it was challenged, because they had a provision like ours, like the one that applies to the city, that says the state can only do this to, if you enact a leg, a law, a legislative act. For us, legislative acts, ordinance, they, they had to enact a law. Well, Supreme Court thought that that was a good enough argument, that they took it off the ballot and stayed it while this thing went through its process. Fast forward to two thousand and sixteen, Supreme Court has looked at this in depth and said, even though it says you can only have a, a binding measure, and there's no procedure that's laid out for an advisory vote, it's pretty common for these advisory votes in other states, and even in the cities and counties in the state of California, has been for a long time. And they said, they think that internally, part of the legislative process is getting information from your constituents, and therefore, you can put an advisory measure on a ballot. Well, until then, we were going by the second half of ninety-two twenty-two, which was a little vague. It just says a proposition may be submitted, or a special election may be called for the purpose of voting on a proposition. And I think crafty city attorneys way before me said, oh, there's the loophole, part B. And the Supreme Court just came out and flatly said, to be binding, it has to be by a legislative act. To be non-binding, you can now, as, just gathering information, you can now do that. Despite that, I, I mean, I think the city council at the time began being pretty confused with what they wanted to do. We worked through, staff recommendation was a non-binding measure, so that it gave flexibility in the future. The city council was pretty, pretty clear, they wanted it to be binding, they wanted it to show the intent of the council. And, and we presented to the voters what we believed was a legally binding document. It's my opinion now that despite the fact that I myself wrote an impartial analysis that said it was binding, that was incorrect. So if Mezrel was in fact not binding, and I'm pretty confident, based on the Supreme Court decision, that's the case, we certainly, staff regrets the confusion resulting from utilizing incorrect procedure. And that said, we believe the message from the voters was still clear. While the vote was technically not binding, we believe the council should move forward as if it was. Staff recommends the council place a non-binding matter on the upcoming ballot to clarify that Mezrel and its restrictions on funding were not binding, but that in order to be transparent and recognize the will of the voters, to submit the question to the voters again, or new, as to whether they concur, the council should be permitted to use general funds, not taxes, in, in, in backfilling any public contribution shortfalls. This would give the council maximum information before it determines what funds to ultimately use, but would still leave general fund sources as possible funding in the event that donation resources do not achieve the ultimate goal. The bottom line is, I think that everybody acted in good faith, the council acted in good faith, the voters acted in good faith. And the only thing different now, and the reason, by the way, I don't recommend that you try to adopt an ordinance now, is because we didn't enact an ordinance before. And it says you can repeal any, any ordinance through this procedure. I, I think the better, the better way of looking at this is, we mistakenly believed it to be binding, but it doesn't matter, because nobody did anything based on that that's out of line with it. So now, going forward, if the council thinks it's a good idea to utilize and use general funds as the city manager has outlined, I think that that can be presented to them in a non-binding way, pretty much the same way it was before, really.
And just not refer to L, just don't refer to it then.
Well, I, I, you don't have to, but I would prefer that we clarify it, because the question's gonna be asked. And I think that there are a lot of things we didn't know back then that we know now. Supreme Court could have helped us out even in twenty fourteen, and they didn't. So I think now we, we have knowledge, and I think the better, the better, I mean, Mike has used the word transparency a number of times in dealing with this, and I think that that's totally correct. And transparent would be to say, we thought that Mezrel would be binding, it's, now appears that it's not. Doesn't matter, because we have looked at it, based on the vote, we've looked at it as if it were. Now we think that we have different needs, times are changed, and this is where we're at, and this is what we're asking for. And I think that that would be total disclosure to the voters, and I think it would be, it, it, it still presents the picture accurately and correctly, and I think that's what staff's recommendation would be.
Okay, so the first thing I'm gonna do is open this section up for public comment. Any public comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. I'm gonna start by asking Mayor Lindquist, any comments on this section, please?
A comment and a question I'd, I'd like to ask our, our city attorney. My, my, my comment is simply that, during this discussion about, about what we're gonna say in, in ballot language, I'm, I'm just hopeful that we are all really, this should be a robust conversation. Okay, in my mind, I'm not settled on something that I think is the right solution, and I look forward to the conversation. A, a question, going back to our, to our city attorney. Bill, I'm a little confused about, you think it's almost we should cure a, a misperception by, in, somewhere in the language of anything we submit in June to say, in effect, Mezrel wasn't actually binding, but your recommendations, we treated it however as though it were. And that, that's something we need to disclose in this ballot language somewhere, is that right?
No, no, actually, what I said was, I believe that we have treated it like it was binding, that we did past tense do so. But going forward, we now recognize, you know, legally, kind of like whenever the Supreme Court comes down and changes the law, that we now look at it in the correct light and say, it never was binding, but we did follow it anyway, and it hasn't impacted any voter negatively that thought that that was correct, because the city council has complied with. because the city council has complied with what the voters asked them to do. Now you're coming back to them and saying, okay, that was then, this is now, we have new needs, new policies, we think that, that this is a good idea. And in fact, back then, there was some sentiment expressed that public funds could be used as long as there weren't new taxes, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question, Bill, actually is a little more, where do we inform people of this? What is the vehicle? Where, where does this go, this language?
Well, I think that there, there's a number of places that you have the opportunity. One, you're very limited in, in number of words, in the ballot proposition itself, something weird, like a hundred and fifty-eight words or something. But the impartial analysis that the city attorney has to, has to draft, can explain a lot of the background, and it usually does. And it, it's like, the ballot language is really short, but the explanation is, allows you like eight hundred words or something. So, I think it's, it's, there, there's an opportunity there. And even though the city attorney's analysis is, is totally impartial and not something the council weighs in on, it's still, I think, appropriate when the council is putting together a ballot proposition to explain why they think this ballot proposition is a good idea to, to vote in favor of and send to the voters. That, that sends me pretty much your intent and your message, which by the way, is how I got the intent the first time the city council voted on Measure L. They explained why they wanted to do it and why it was a good idea. I just take those ideas, put them into an analysis, and pass them on. But that's where that would probably fit best.
Are you comfortable with that, Mike?
Yeah, I think so. I was a little confused, so it really is clarification. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I look forward to the conversation.
It's coming. Councilmember DeGolia.
Wow, well, that's new information. And I guess, the way that I would look at it is, it's an attorney's opinion, which is our attorney's opinion, and it needs to be communicated to people. I'm sure it will be communicated in the press, but in the context of the ballot, I think Bill's exactly right, that it's the attorney's opinion connected to the ballot measure where he can go into detail in this. From our side as the council, I think it's irrelevant. And it's only irrelevant because A, we don't need to use general funds before this ballot measure would come to our residents, because we've got the entire design expense covered through the hard work that's been done by Atherton now and by the staff to organize this, so we're not dependent on those general funds. And B, I think we need to go out to our residents in exactly the same frame of mind that Measure L was crafted in, which was a question, like staff has suggested, should the town of Atherton be allowed to use general funds to fund remaining funding needs for the new town center? I think that whether that is binding or not binding is absolutely irrelevant to that question, because it really responds to Measure L that was out there. And it's not saying should we overturn Measure L, I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is, should, should we, should the residents indicate to us that they have a desire that we use these general funds to supplement the fund, the private funding that we receive and the other funding? And that's a different opinion than they expressed in November two thousand twelve. And there's a very real reason for that different opinion, which is, we've made this effort that we've made, we've got a great deal of information about how much this is going to cost and why it's unnecessary for our town. So, I don't think that the residents will have a problem with this.
Thank you. Councilmember.
So, I, I agree with what Rick said, but I, I'm concerned that a possible write-up, and I could imagine it getting to where it would be confusing and, and concerning then to, to what the residents might be and maybe affecting their vote with regards to going into the Supreme Court and this, all this other. So, so I guess, the way you would write it up, I, it just needs to be simple and clear. And with regards to the write-up, I mean, the write-up that you have here is good, however, you know, our intent is that we're going to use private funds first. And so I would say, make sure that we say, in addition to, you know, can we use general funds in addition to privately funds raised? Because the way you have it down at the end, it's kind of like an afterthought, others' funding sources might, you know, would include private donations, grants, building fees. And so, I would say, in addition to these things, can we use general funds out of reserve without raising taxes, you know, to, to finish the, the, the construction of the, of the building?
I put you for wordsmithing, and I have wordsmithing to do too.
Yeah, so, so my only concern was is that we send the message, like we've said from the very beginning, first thing is the general thought, is, is the.
Private donations.
Yeah, the private donations and grants. Next is some money that we have in unallocated reserves, and then after that would be, you know, others. So, anyway, that would be my comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, there's always something, isn't there? But I, I wholeheartedly agree that, you know, for all intents and purposes, that we have lived by the voters' approval of Measure L over the last five years, and, you know, there are many new residents in town who don't even know what Measure L is, but we need to indicate that we're going to pass the voters to overturn that essentially, and to allow us to prudently use available surplus general funds, you know, to fund this town center, and lay out the, how we're going to do it. And we're in a much better financial situation as a town. We've got great staff, governing boards, and the council. So, it's a much different climate, so, than it was in two thousand eleven, twenty twelve. So, I think that we'll all have a chance of wordsmithing the ballot measure itself and our argument for, we're going to allow an argument against, rebuttal, all that, you know, so that needs to be decided. How many, I have a question, clarifying question. How many signatures can be on the argument four?
Five.
Only five? Okay.
Strangely enough, strangely enough, that coincides with the number of city council members in both general law cities.
So, you know, obviously, this is news to all of us. So, we've, as you know, we've been operating under the constraints of Measure L since we were all under that perception. So, I do believe that there is a reasonable public perception of people that do know what Measure L is, that we should be operating in that same manner, even though we don't have to at this point, as of twenty-three minutes ago. We do understand that, we believe that the, some of the taxpayers out there may believe that we should be operating in. So, I think that we do need to make sure that we, you know, do go out there and say, hey, you know, we've been operating under the assumption that Measure L was in fact a valid binding agreement, to which it is not. But we feel that the town's position would be in good faith to go out and just inform you, we obviously may have a funding gap, obviously. So, we may be able to utilize general funds, but we would like to inform you in essence somewhere along those lines, not wordsmithing everything here, but just making sure that everybody understands, we have our priority options laid out, where we, we're still going off the assumption of Measure L, as we've laid out our options here, no new taxes, et cetera, et cetera, but utilizing funds in a prudent manner to build a facility in fact within the means of the town. So, I think that somehow if we get that language in there and the understanding, clarity, I think that in general, most people out there would understand, lawyers get in the middle of things all the time.
Carrie, can I?
Please, Mike.
Yeah, I have a question. As I think about this more, if, if Measure L was not binding, and, and by the way, I completely agree that once you have the, the voters for their opinion, you know, you should follow it, and that's what we're doing, and I think it's right to treat it that way. So, I completely agree with that. But now, as we're, as we're going into a new ballot measure, we know going in that it's not going to be binding, although again, I think you typically want to follow the will of the voters, obviously. But that means, do we need to phrase this, is this a pass, is this a pass, not pass measure now, or can this be phrased as a, as a, in effect, a survey almost, a fancy survey? And I asked the question, I don't have an answer in mind, but it seems to me we might want to talk about that, because if it's non-binding, we don't have to worry about fifty-one, forty-nine, or, or do we? Have you thought about that? Is there an answer to that?
You actually, in order to go to an election and use the election process, you have to follow the Elections Code, as, which technically, nobody has been doing on these non-binding advisory measures ever. There isn't anything in the Elections Code that says you can or can't. And California's a code state, and therefore you can only do what they say you can do, which is why the Supreme Court had to kind of go to lengths to justify doing it anyway, which they did. And it wasn't until today, after George asked me to take a look at Measure L, to make sure that, you know, I was ready to discuss it, that I went back and found that in two thousand sixteen, this had all happened. So, we do have to comply with the Elections Code. We, we thought we were before. But now in going forward, so we can adopt an ordinance, a new ordinance, that says we can use this funding, and since the other one wasn't binding, or was binding, doesn't matter because this will trump it, because it's a new one that is in conflict with it. But I think that it's just as, it, it's just as easy to use the same kind of question that was asked before, and that is, do you want us to do it, yes or no? And, and that gives the council the greatest flexibility, because technically, at that point in time, if in fact, the, say it was a very close election, fifty-one, forty-nine, one way or the other, the council could still exercise its discretion there and say, well, this is so important, we think that we should do it. You know, politically, we, we're, we're paid all this money to, to take, to make the tough decisions. And I say that with my tongue in cheek, obviously. But that is the kind of decision that, that would still be available. If you do put it on as an ordinance and the ordinance doesn't pass, Measure L wasn't binding, but you still have that direction from the voters sitting there, and now you can't put another measure on a ballot for twelve months.
Yeah, I, I've got you. It seems to me clear that it's a better option to not go for, for an ordinance approval, but rather for a non-binding advisory.
Right.
So, I, I think the question then is, where and how does the council articulate that this measure is a non-binding measure just to advise the council, not to restrict the council in use of general funds?
The template that we have.
Isn't the answer, there's operative language in the, the measure language itself?
Yes.
It uses words like advise, and then in the thing that Bill provides the city attorney, there's a, perhaps a more in-depth question of what that means?
The, the original, the original Measure L actually said, this is a measure submitted to the voters to recommend that the council do this or that. That was changed by the council, because it is the council's measure. It's not, it's not like, you know, if somebody did a petition and brought it, I get to put the title on it, I get to say what it is, that's my job. I don't have that job here because it really is the city council's decision what to call it, where to put it, and how to do it. And so, within the language, it should say something that, to the effect of, this is a measure, you can either use the word, it's an advisory measure, or you can use something, you can words, use words to say, we are seeking direction from the voters on, on whether or not we should do this. And that, I mean, that sends a pretty strong message to the voters too. It's very clear, we're asking you to tell us if we should, we're not asking you to tell us if we can. And, 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 and again, it's up to the council to decide, you know, what, what parameters you want to put in there. And, and by the way, you have one of the best communicators around sitting there with his computer on his lap, and I, I think that what he gave you as a start was a very good start. I think the addition of the, the other factors that, that weren't, that weren't discussed in there, using the private funds first, and, and I think laying out for the public exactly what it is you're asking them to comment on is, is important. And I think that the council, you know, I think Elizabeth, you're right, wordsmithing is now open.
After that, if I could, if I look at this language, I think it's very good. Our goal ought to be though, to be as sort of narrow and precise in this language as possible. I, I'm wondering if we can find language, instead of laying it out this way, talks about the fact that what we're really looking to do is to eliminate, or what council's considering is, is eliminating restrictions that have been placed on our normal ability to fund projects, and to fund this project in the same manner that we would normally fund anything, as though Measure L had never happened.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Mike. It's, we've been operating under the pretense that Measure L does exist and is in play, and everything we're, we've outlined is literally outlining it in a manner, we just want to make sure that the taxpayers have a very clarity, very big portion of clarity, the way that we're acting in a prudent manner.
Through the chair.
Please.
So, could we, in our little ballot measure language, say by voting yes, you know, at some point in it, after we first, you say this is, can only be a hundred and fifty words?
What, is it like a hundred and eighty words or something?
I'm not sure about the question itself.
The ballot? Well, what they, okay, here's, here's the way.
My question was, by voting yes, this would overturn Measure L, which was passed, or that was passed in two thousand twelve?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that, that, but there's two, there's two parts to this. The ballot measure can be twenty-four pages long. There's a summary that goes in the, in the ballot.
Where they click off.
And that's the yes or no. And, and it's that summary that's, I think, even much more important than the, the longer version.
Right.
And, and that was the case with Measure L, there was a longer version, a page or so, and then that little box.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that, you know, to let people know that clearly by voting yes on this, or however we, if we are by voting no, it overturns, yeah, however we word it.
Well, I don't think that in the question, we should reference Measure L at all.
Agreed.
Measure L said, should the council be allowed to build the civic center primarily with private funds?
Yeah, that's true.
And I think what we should say is, should the town of Atherton be allowed to supplement private donations with general funds to satisfy the remaining need to build, to construct the civic center?
Without tax.
And my preference is not to call it advisory or, or get, I don't, I don't want to get into this legal issue. This is Bill's issue, and I don't want to be in the situation where some other attorney might have a different opinion, and we have to work through that. Instead, I think we can go out to our residents with the fundamental issue, which is, should we be able to supplement these private donations with general funds? And that, it, it, you know, whether that overturns Measure L or not, it clearly changes the direction.
Just gives us new advice.
And, and I think that effectively does exactly what Mike said, which is, it, it removes the restriction, whether enforceable or not, that was associated with Measure L.
Right, and I think by adding, by adding the language of no new taxes in there, it makes it very clear to the people that do want to donate, that in fact, they're not going to get hit again in the future. that in fact they're not going to get hit again in the future for something.
I agree with that.
So I think that making that very clear, uh, would be the way to deal with it. Um, Mayor?
I'm sorry, Carrie, if I could jump in, I, I agree with what Rick said. My concern is it, it seems to me that it, um, the answer is, I mean, why? Why do we need permission to do this, right? Why, why do we need to go to the voters to get permission to use general funds if, if we can do that, that's in our own authority legally? And the answer is because, um, before we, the voters passed this thing, that asked us not to do it, right? So somewhere we have to explain, that's why we're coming back to you, is because before we had this, this artificial constraint put in place and now we're removing.
It's the public perception.
I, I, I think that's right, Mike. I think the, the word is respectful. It's respectful of the voters. And I do think that what George said is accurate. You know, if we're misestimating our electorate and it comes in close to fifty-fifty, I mean, if there's really that much that's not in favor of it and it swings to the side that we don't want, it, then, then we can rely on a legal opinion to make a judgment about how important this is.
To get a doubt.
I don't think we're gonna get there because from my conversations with people, you know, I mean, everybody would have voted for what we voted for. I voted for it in two thousand twelve. And it was only normal. I mean, lots of people voted for it. But every one of those people that I've talked to would rather have us use these general funds that we haven't used yet than to raise new taxes. Or than to not build the civic center.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Connors.
I agree. And, and by the way, they didn't say they couldn't do it, right? We only asked them one question, or rather, we didn't give them another option. We gave them one option.
Right.
That's true.
And like you, I voted in favor of it, right? But this, this question was not asked at that time.
I campaigned for it, even though I was against putting it on the ballot. But the, the way it was written, you know, it, it, it was like a poll to, I thought, the, the residents that we needed a new town center.
Yeah.
That's, that's what.
Who doesn't want
Right.
to pay for it with private donations rather than with our tax dollars?
When the council forced it on there.
I'm surprised thirty people said, thirty percent said no.
It was to kill the project instead of, you know.
Yes. Mr. Connors.
Mike, the, the simple answer is the city attorneys in partial analysis is supposed to give the history behind it and the impacts that could or would result from a yes or a no vote. And the history behind it would be pretty simple, I think. You know, the voters approved Mezural and, and, and resoundingly said they wanted a new center. Um, but it had restrictions attached to it as to where the funding sources would come from. There's now, there's now a, a gap that needs to be filled and this is how it can be filled. Maybe, exactly.
So.
Yeah. I agree with what Rick said. That makes sense to me. That, that makes sense to me. Okay.
Councilwoman Lewis has got to go, but I want to make sure that we get one question on the table before she walks out the door. And that there's no problem with getting the new language on the ballot for the next ballot instead of pushing it off till November, obviously, under the circumstances that, that's been brought to light today. So if all council members are supportive of it, on February fifteenth, we should be prepared to have language available so that we can call for an election on February fifteenth.
A male election.
A male-in election. So I just wanted to do that before Elizabeth. She's got to go to another meeting.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, how much time do you have?
I've got five minutes.
Okay. If I could, could see that, I'd love Elizabeth to, to at least introduce the topic before she leaves, if possible, which is the timeline we're talking about. But before that, I, what I propose to do is to appoint a subcommittee of the council to come back with wordsmith recommendation language to us at the, at our February fifteen meeting. And I, I would propose that that subcommittee, um, consists of Councilmen DeGolia and Vice Mayor Weist to come back to us. And I know it's a quick turnaround and I hope you've got the time to put in it, but to come back to their, to their full council, uh, with specific language in two weeks that we will continue to wordsmith.
So we would consider that an ad hoc appointment by the mayor?
Yeah.
That I would agree to it.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember DeGolia agrees to it. And then the last thing, sorry, Mike, before she walks out the door, are we in consensus that, uh, we're going to move forward for the February fifteenth so we can call for an election?
Yes.
Yes?
I think Mike wants to say one more thing.
And Mike, back to you. Elizabeth's got two and a half minutes.
Okay, what I'd like to do, and, and we looked at the, the timeline that, that George or Teresa someone put together. Um, we could talk very easily about how we put language on the, uh, the timeline for different language and where we do it, when we do it. But I think Elizabeth has raised a number of issues about, um, relating to the, the need to develop, um, an educational campaign to make sure the public's fully informed and they vote on this. And, and Elizabeth, you can spend a few minutes talking about the timeline there and whether you think it's possible to get that done by June. Um, could you, could you spare some time and let us know your opinion on that?
You know, um.
She said she would love to.
Yeah, yeah. So we have, we have a, um, a comment from, uh, a, a resident, pub, member of the public asking, you know, who's gonna do this? I mean, it is not an easy task to launch a campaign. I've done a number of campaigns and parcel tax campaigns and other campaigns. And you have to form a campaign committee. It's got to be resident-led. But there can be a couple of council members on it, uh, as residents. Um, but, um, you know, they need to meet. We have to identify those people. They have to agree. There has to be a chair, a vice chair, a finance person, because you have to not only, uh, organize, uh, to figure out how you're gonna launch this campaign. It's an education campaign. It's an outreach campaign. You've got to do mailers, lawn signs. You've got to get a graphic designer. Do, uh, almanac, add, uh, permission, yes, submissions and, you know, I'd recommend not, uh, print ads, but the banner, online, uh, ads. And those are clogged up with lots of other people. You've got to get, uh, your reservations in there. You know, you've got to figure out who's gonna do precinct walking, uh, who's gonna host home events in the neighborhood. It's not an easy thing, especially for June, June, uh, write-in ballot because people, their mailboxes get full. They get full of stuff. The good thing is, is that there's not a lot of, um, other competing ballots. But the bad news is there's not, it's not on anybody's radar. What? You know, I'm getting something I've got to vote on in June. So there's a lot to it. Uh, so it's some, it's not something that is, uh, I, I think I'm gonna, uh, I just want to let you guys know, you know, I'd be very happy to help with this. But we've got to get a handful of residents who are dedicated to seeing this happen.
Uh, is it just, I just, a clarity question from Mr. Connors. Since it's an advisory campaign, does it restrict the town in any way? Or does it open us up so that we can actually be, because it's an advisory capacity, we're actually informing them more of a process, really, and asking for support from voters versus a voter, I, I think the involvement by voters, the two-thirds, or fifty-plus one, whatever the percentage would be, is not really applicable here. And I think that the town's constraints, help me if I'm wrong, we may not be as constrained as we are because it's not.
I think you can campaign from the DAs?
Actually.
Please.
You, you, you can all campaign as much as you want. What you can't do is spend public tax money on that now. It, it, there are some bright line tests. You can educate, but you can't ab- advocate.
Yeah.
So, um, there's some, there's, there's some recent cases that came out that, uh, went out of Salinas that wasn't good for cities potential, particularly. But you can, you can, when you vote for it and, and you can make re, your reasons known very, very clearly, but you can't then go out and like pay for a mailer to go to everybody on a one-issue election that says, well, we put this on the, on the ballot and we want you to vote for it. You can't do that.
The town can, but the town can educate, uh, and they have in the parcel tax, uh, you know, they put it in the Athertonian and stuff. And but.
But you also, your ballot argument in favor of it.
I don't think we're gonna have a problem getting residents who, we've had residents that have been very committed to the parcel tax. And this is in a lot of ways a precursor to the November parcel tax. So this committee is gonna be in a great position to roll over.
Oh, yeah, that'll be happening.
So Mayor Leffler, as it stands, now, uh, Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember DeGolia are very pleased to set forth and, uh, move us in the right direction.
I heard that.
And as I recall, Elizabeth didn't have to run her own personal campaign, right? She's got lots of campaigns.
Move you to adjourn.
Uh, thank you. And anything else, staff?
Mike was just.
Mike, I'm sorry, I must have cut you off because of the laughter.
Yeah, no, okay, are we, what's happening? Elizabeth is choosing herself or continuing the meeting? Is that what's happening?
I'm, I'm gonna say goodbye.
Okay.
And, um.
She's leaving, Mike, and we're gonna try to make that motion to adjourn so that she doesn't feel like she's missing anything. And I wouldn't want to talk about her.
Before you do that, I haven't heard much from Bill and I want to make sure that he's, Bill, during the give-off, they've done a lot of campaign-related stuff on, on issues like this in the past. Have you got any advice or thoughts about it?
Well, my only, uh, comment that I, that I had made and maybe you didn't hear it, I, you know, I think it's, the key thing is to tell people to vote. Um, because they, you know, as Elizabeth pointed out, there's, they're just gonna get a letter in the mail that says, hey, there's, there's an election coming up and we're gonna send you a ballot, like similar to what happened with the, with the school tax. And so I think that we are okay with saying, don't forget to vote on this important item. And, and I do think that, uh, you know, as, as is pointed out, I think all of us need to do our best to, to help out and educate. Um, but if we're gonna do mailers advocating, then, then as Elizabeth pointed out, we're gonna need to find some way, uh, you know, to tap some people to get some funding for it because the city can't pay for it.
Correct.
Uh, and, and the time to do that is, is like immediate because we don't, don't have the time, really. So.
Is there anything you think we need to do prior to the next meeting of February fifteenth?
Bye.
Uh, I think we need to think if there, if there's any potential funding sources, people that we can get tapped for because it'd be great to run an ad in the paper just to tell people about it as well as, uh, you know, maybe do a mailer. So I'm thinking that's probably gonna be six thousand dollars
Yeah.
for a committee. I don't think we need to do a bunch of signs or anything like that. That's my, my two cents on it. And I'm all in favor of Elizabeth leading the committee with Rick.
All, all in favor.
But I'll help out. I'll help out.
And, and the town is restricted from the minute you call the special election.
Right, so that is February fifteenth, you're telling us we'd be restricted, other than supporting information that would clarify Mezural if we were going in that direction, just in the language related to it.
No need.
No need. Okay. Mike, final comments, because nobody else is here?
I think, I think we're good. You're, you're there. Thank you for chairing the meeting, Carrie.
Perfect, Mike. Thank you very much. And a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I.